Amazing grace, house me in this sound. Let's say a red light. I once was lost, but now my path was blind. But now I see.
Towards grace that taught my heart to be, and grace my fears relieved. How precious did that grace appear? The art I first believed.
My chains are gone, I am set free. My God, my Savior has risen me. And like a love is mercy he raised, an ending love, amazing grace. The Lord has brought his hand to me. His word my hopes enthused. He will my shield and portion me as long as life endures. My chains are gone, I am set free. My God, my Savior has risen me. And like a love is mercy he raised, an ending love, amazing grace. My chains are gone, I am set free. My God, my Savior has risen me. And like a love is mercy he raised, an ending love, amazing grace. The earth shall soon be sore, like snow the sun forbear to shine. A calm and cold be here below will be forever mine. Will be forever mine.
Let us pray. Great God, our heavenly Father, thank you very much, Lord, once again, that you have us back again to this study of your Word, the Book of Romans, Panginoon. Thank you very much. You are really, truly a sovereign God. You are in control. And that's why, although we have this pandemic, Panginoon, we were able to have this gathering, to study your Word, Panginoon, limitless and boundless, Panginoon, because you are a God of spirit, God. So, Lord, we pray, let your Holy Spirit minister to each and every one of us. Use your servant, Panginoon, our pastor. Use him mightily, Lord God, so that your words may instill in our heart, in our mind, and help each and every one of us, help the participants, Panginoon, to have an open heart, an open mind, and understand your will and know you more, Panginoon, and have this Word not only knowledge, but also to apply it in our lives, Lord God. So, once again, we are very grateful and thankful to you. And we submit all these things, Lord God. We submit this program to you for your glory in the mighty name of your Son, our loving King Jesus Christ. Amen.
Good evening, everyone. It is our privilege to once again introduce to you God's messenger tonight. He spoke to us last week on the topic about God's righteousness. For our first timers here, may we give you a little background about him. He is a loving husband to his lovely wife, Atipita, and a father to three good-looking sons. He is currently overseeing three satellites under CCF Metro East Hub, namely, CCF Caentha, CCF Antipolo, and CCF Lower Antipolo. He is also an advocate of the World Needs a Father Program that teaches parents on how to be an effective role models to their children. Friends, please welcome on your screen our dear pastor, Pastor Mark Villarreal.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you. Bang-dang-gabi sa inyong lahat. Naku excited na naman ako to be with all of you. We had a very wonderful time last Wednesday. And you know, I'm hoping that this will be another fruitful time for all of us. You know, papasalamat ako na, you know, Doctune initiated this Bible study because personally, it also has helped me, you know, to discipline myself again, to study God's Word. And I really enjoy studying and sharing God's Word to people. You know, as far as, you know, God does allow me in this capacity, ito po isang privilehiyo sa inyong lahat. So, magandang gabi, holy sa inyong lahat. I'd like to welcome all of you, especially those with us for the first time. If it is your first time here, okay lang naman. I mean, it doesn't mean that you need to attend the previous sessions unless you want to have a certificate, I know. But you know, if you're really curious, you know, what the Book of Romans is all about, you want to grow in your relationship with God, you want to understand the Bible, this is the place to be. So, our topic for tonight, for this session, this session is now session three, is entitled "God's Righteousness Reveals Our Sinfulness." Okay, last Wednesday, on topic natin, God's righteousness reveals, is it, tawag ba, reveals God's wrath or requires God's wrath? Pero ngayon, ang ating topic is "God's Righteousness Reveals Our Sinfulness." Now, I want to show you a picture. Can you tell me what, you know, what you observed? Itong picture na to. So, let's go to the next slide. What can you see in this picture? Ano 'yung nao-observe ninyo? Diba sa picture na ito? Diba, nakita na natin, may dalawang lalaki, may dalawang tao. Anong ginagawa nung isa dun sa kaibigan niya, sa kasama niya? Anong ginagawa niya? Diba, you can chat your answers, your suggestions sa chat box. Diba, I think you can unmute yourself. So, anong ginagawa nung isa, sa isa, bawat isa? Well, well, 'yung una, 'yung nakapula, anong ginagawa niya dun sa kasama niya, naka-grit? Nilininis niya 'yung mata. Okay. Nilinis na 'yung mata. So, ngayon, 'yun ang sinusubukan niya. Nilinis niya 'yung mata, trying to remove the speck from his friend's eye. Pero merong, meron malaking lag. Diba, may malaking, tinatanggal niya 'yung puweng ng kaibigan niya. Pero siya mismo, meron siyang malaking lag. Ano ba 'yung lag sa tagalog? 'Yung malaking kahoy dun sa kanyang mata. So, in essence, ito 'yung ating topic for tonight. Ang topic natin for tonight has to do with hypocrisy. All right, hypocrisy. So, ang tanong ko, do you think or do you consider yourself a hypocrite? You know, siguro ba, 'yung pag tinanong ko 'yun, ang unang immediate response muna natin is, "Hindi, I'm not a hypocrite." Why would I be a hypocrite? Because a hypocrite is something bad, diba? When you think of a person who is a hypocrite, talagang napakasabang taong 'yun. So, to consider myself as a hypocrite, I don't think so. But you know what? That is connected to our topic tonight. But before that, mag-review muna tayo. Diba, review tayo. Ang topic natin last Wednesday is, ano ba ang problema natin? Ano ba talaga ang problema natin? At iniisip natin, minsan, kulang ba tayo sa pagkain? Korab ba ang gobyerno? Marami bang mahihirap? 'Yun ba ang problema natin sa lipunan? Pero pag tingnan natin ang salita ng Diyos, if we really look deep within the heart, our main problem is really sin. And last Wednesday, pinag-aralan natin, bakit tayo nagbe-behave this way? Why do we behave this way? And what is the cause of our behavior? So, we discovered last week that we celebrate evil. You know, we live in a world that people celebrate evil. As I mentioned last week, especially in the West, 'yung mga dating tama, ngayon, eh, sinasabi nila, mali daw. Diba, pero 'yung mga dating maling gawa, eh, mali pa niliwala. Sinasabi nila, okay na ngayon or tama na ngayon 'yun. So, we live in a world where we celebrate evil. We see that all around. Diba, pag ang tao gumawa ng isang, hindi magandang bagay, nakaisa siya sa kanyang kapwa, minsan, nagtha-thumbs up pa tayo, "Galing mo, pare, galing mo to biscarte." Diba, I remember my friend, diba? He mentioned, pinos siya sa social media niya, 'yung nasa gasolig station siya, tapos meron mga rider dun. At sinasabi nila, mabuti nga, okay talaga ang ano, sa panahon na ito, ang ano, ang motorsiklo. Pasensya na kayo sa mga nagmamotor, ah. Sinasabi nila, nakaka-counterflow daw sila. Ah, kung nabangga daw, kung nakabangga daw sila ng four wheels, madali nilang takasan, 'yung mga ganon. So, tapos, tinagtatawanan daw nila 'yun. So, para, bakit ganon, diba? 'Yung bagay na hindi tama, we find it amusing or we like it. We, in fact, we celebrate people who do it. Diba, we live in a world where evil is celebrated. And why do we celebrate evil? Because basically, people do evil things. And why do people do evil things? Because people's minds don't work. That's very important point. People's minds don't work as it is supposed to work. People's minds don't work as God wants it to work. And why is that so? Because God has abandoned the people. The idea of abandon is God has handed us over to the consequences of our evil behavior. And then, why has God abandoned the people? Because the root cause is because people replaced God. In other words, our fundamental problem in this world, the most fundamental problem is idolatry. Idolatry is the most fundamental problem in the world. Paul said that we have no excuse. We know God. And we're gonna talk a little about that again tonight. We have, we seen him in nature. We see him in the Bible. We see evidences of God all around us. So, we are without excuse. But what we did is we, we said to an all-powerful, all-wise, all-loving God, we said to him, "No, thank you. I would rather live my life on my own or I would rather love this thing or this person." And that is idolatry. So, that was our topic last week. Now, while we go to chapter two, we're gonna study Romans, chapter two, verses 1 to 16. You would notice something. There is a change in the pronouns. Okay, change in the pronouns. In chapter two, verses 18, sorry, chapter one, verses 18 to towards the end, you would notice that Paul would use the pronoun "they" or "them," diba? For example, he would use, "God gave them over to the lusts of their hearts. God gave them over to degrading passions. God gave them over to a depraved mind." Now, you would see a shift in the pronoun in chapter two. In chapter one, verses 29 to 31, if you would remember, Paul lists a lot of sins that these people commit. Okay, you'll see it in the next slide. Unrighteousness, wickedness, greed, evil, murderers, gossip, slanders, haters of God. So, if you are reading the letter, you would say, "Wow, grabe talaga. Napakasama talaga na lipunan. Napakasama talaga ng mga tao. Napakasama talaga nila." Diba? And then sabihin mo, Paul, "Go ahead, Paul. Preach it, brother, preach it." Diba, sige, ano pa, ano, kasama talaga ng mga tao. And then, sabi niya sa chapter two, verse one, sabi niya, "Therefore, you, you, ako, yes, you, you have no excuse. Every one of you passes judgment. For in that which you judge another, you condemn yourself. For you who judge practice the same things. And we know that the judgment of God rightly falls upon those who practice such things. But do you suppose this, O man, when you pass judgment on those who practice such things and do the same yourself, that you will escape the judgment of God?" So, Paul shifts his pronoun from "they, them," he now uses the second-person pronoun "you." In fact, from verses 1 to 5, the word "you" or "yourself" was written 14 times. So, in other words, nilist ni Paul 'yung mga kasalanan. 'Yung kanina sa kasalanan nakita natin to set the stage in chapter two. And he said, "Kayo, you, 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 you have no excuse." The word "no excuse" or "excuse," the root word there is "apologia." You know, you know what "apologia" means? You know, some of you, you love to study the Bible. You love to defend the Bible. And today, in modern times, we call a defender of the faith, an apologist. So, the idea of no excuse is you're trying to defend yourself and thinking that I'm a good person. But your defense lacks merit. If you argue your case that you're a good person, but it completely lacks merit, it is without justification. That is the meaning of no excuse. So, sinasabi ni Paul, "Wala kayong excuse. You have no excuse." So, in other words, this speaks to all of us. It's no longer, "Sila, sila, sila, makasalanan sila." Sinasabi ni Paul, "Kayo, wala kayong excuse." Because the truth is, we have a tendency to think highly of ourselves. Diba, we think we are generally good people. When Paul presents a list of sins, our first inclination is what? Iisipin natin 'yung kapitbahay natin, iisipin natin 'yung kamag-anak natin, iisipin natin 'yung kacherch natin. Minsan, iisipin natin 'yung asawa natin. Pero rarely do we think of ourselves. And that is what Paul is driving at. Now, let's, for example, you know, I gave, I have a simple exercise. You know, I have some photos in the next slide. For example, who is this person? Baka, kilala niyo ba 'yan? Sino 'yan? Si... Si George Streagan ba 'yan? Si Hitler. Si Hitler. Okay, what about the next one? Kilala niyo ba ito? Medyo, ito, Musolini. Si Stalin, si Joseph Stalin. Si Hitler is known to, in history, as the person responsible for the murder of six million Jews of genocide. Si Stalin naman is responsible, he is a dictator in Russia. He is responsible for the execution of over 700,000 people. Okay, sa Asia, meron din sa Asia. Itong picture na to. Kilala niyo ba ito? Medyo, he's from Cambodia. His name is Paul, Paul Pot. Okay, si Paul Pot, galing talaga ni Doctune, no? Si Paul Pot is the head of the Khmer Rouge. And he is responsible, estimate, the murders in Cambodia, the killing fields. Estimate over 1 million Cambodians were murdered, were killed. Now, when you look at these people, parang rogues' gallery, what is the word that comes to your mind? What is the word that comes to your mind? Evil, right? They are evil people. Now, look at the next slide. The next slide, of course, you don't know that person, but that is a person looking at the mirror. So, if you have a mirror beside you, kung meron kayong salamin, tumingay sa salamin. And can you describe to me what that person is? Is she a good person, a bad person? What can you say? You know, generally, we categorize people, evil people are evil. But when I look at myself or we look at myself or yourself in the mirror, you would not think, you would not categorize yourself, diba, in that category. But the truth is, you know, our tendency, this is our human tendency. And tendency po natin, we compare our goodness, our righteousness with others. So, pag may kinompehan sa rin nating si Hitler, iniisip natin, mabait tayo. And iniisip, dahil, iniisip na mabait tayo, iniisip natin, wala tayong kasalanan. 'Yun po ang pakakamali natin. That is what Paul is saying. We have this proclivity to think that we are good people. But Paul is saying, you should not compare your righteousness with that to others. You should compare your righteousness to God. And when you compare your righteousness to a holy God, you have no excuse. You have no excuse. And therefore, your response is to humble yourself. You know, I remember si prophet Isaiah when he first encountered the Lord. Isaiah, chapter six, what did he say? Sabi ba niya, "Wow, Lord, amazing. I now see you at last." Kitakita na kita. "Come, Lord, come." What was his first response? Sabi niya, "I am ruined." Why? Because I am a man of unclean lips. In other words, when he saw a holy God, he recognized his sinfulness in relation to God. And that is our proper response. We should not, tawag nga nila, ikangay, ride on our high horse and look down on others in self-righteousness. But we should humble ourselves and acknowledge that we too are sinners. We have no excuse. So, in other words, in chapter two, it's like turning the tables. Parang suddenly, oh, sige, sila, 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 makasalanan. Then Paul turns the tables and tells them, "You, you have no excuse." So, the main point na antok na ito is this. And if there's something that you need to remember, madali naman ni-remember because rhyming siya, is this, "Judge lightly because God will judge fairly." Judge lightly because God will judge fairly. God is a judge. We talked about that in last session. And because God is a judge, he will judge fairly. He is a God of justice. But the command for us is we should judge lightly because we too, when we look at ourselves, we too have the proclivity to commit sin. And that's why in Matthew, chapter seven, okay, well, last slide, young Matthew, chapter seven, but you can turn your Bibles there. It says, "Do not judge." Sabi ni Jesus, "Do not judge so that you will not be judged." Verse two, sabi niya, "For in the way you judge, you will be judged. And by your standard of measure, it will be measured to you." Essentially, what verse two is saying, in the way that you judge, you will be judged by your standard of measure, it will be measured to you. Essentially, ang ibig sabihin ng verse two, kung gusto mo mangmusga, if you want to judge a person, you must be willing to accept that that same standard will be applied to you. That's the meaning. You know, I remember many years ago, this famous televangelist said, well, there was this famous televangelist, maybe some of you know this. He fall into immorality. Not only immorality, I mean, he had an extramarital affair. He's a televangelist. And then, not only that, there was accusations that he misused the funds of the church because there were many, they had many, it was a mega church. It's in TV. And when this person, this televangelist fell, he had an extramarital affair, it was exposed. It was in the news. Another famous televangelist said to him, said, translated media, "That person is a cancer on the body of Christ." Sinabi ng isang televangelist. So, itong number one televangelist, tubiged extramarital affair, misused funds, another famous evangelist, televangelist said, you know, that guy? He condemned that guy essentially. And he said, "That guy is a cancer on the body of Christ." Do you know what happened to that televangelist who said that, that televangelist is a cancer in the body of Christ? Less than a year later, he himself fell into adultery. He was exposed. He had sex with a prostitute. Kinonfest niya on national TV. See that? You know, we judge people and say, "Yeah, cancer 'yan sa..." Pero ikaw mismo, nakasala ko. You know, also, in the US, there was a Speaker of the House who led the impeachment of Bill Clinton. Do you remember? Bill Clinton was impeached because why? One of his accusations is he had an affair with Monica Lewinsky, a White House intern. And however, he is President of the United States. But you know what? The Speaker of the House who led the impeachment also confessed that while the impeachment was ongoing, he also had an extramarital affair. Can you imagine that? People accusing or bringing down others, pero sila mismo, 'yung standard na inimpost nila on others, they also violate. That is what's happening, diba? If you do not judge in the same you judge, you will all, you will be judged by your standard of measure, it will be measured to you. And then, in verse three, is the image that I shared earlier. Why do you look at a speck that is in your brother's eye or do not notice the lag that is in your own eye? Tinanong mo na 'yung dumi sa mata mo. Or how can you say to your brother, "Let me take the speck out of your eye, and behold, the lag is in your eye." Diba, how can you say to your brother, "Tangkali mo na dumi sa mata mo, pero ikaw, wala ka na ng dumi rin sa mata mo." And then, verse five, ano sabi ni, Panginoon ni Jesus? "You hypocrite, hypocritto." First, take out the lag of your own eye, then you will see clearly to take the speck out of your brother's eye. So, "Judge lightly because God will judge fairly." Now, in the next verse, this is what Paul writes. "Or do you think lightly of the richest..." "Do you think lightly of the riches of his kindness and tolerance and patience, not knowing that the kindness of God leads you to repentance?" So, Paul is telling the Roman believers that they were taking the mercy of God for granted. They were taking the kindness of God as an invitation for them to sin. In other, they were taking advantage of the kindness of God. Paul is saying, the kindness of God should lead you to repentance. Pero the opposite is happening. God is kind, he is patient, he is tolerant. In some translations, he is forbearing. The idea of, the meaning of tolerant or forbearance is God is pausing or causing a delay for judgment. That's the idea. Dun lang galing 'yung salitang ceasefire, diba, or truce. Pag may ceasefire, hindi sabihin, tapos ang laban o tapos ang gera. May pause lang. So, God is saying, the presence of God is there is a pause. There is a pause, there is a ceasefire. But one day, wrath will come. And you are taking it for granted. You are, you are taking advantage of the kindness of God. But the opposite must be true. A true believer acknowledges the kindness of God in his life, and it leads him to repentance. Okay, so, the kindness of God leads a person, when you experience it, understand it, and you truly know God, it will result to repentance. A repentance is a change of mind. When you change your mind about sin, then your behavior will change, all right? But the problem is, the people are exploiting the kindness of God. And therefore, if you are exploiting the kindness of God, if you are stubborn, you're unrepentant. It says in verse five, "But because of your stubbornness and unrepentant heart, you are storing up wrath for yourself in the day of wrath and revelation, the righteous judgment of God, who will render to each person according to his deeds to those who by perseverance in doing good, seek for glory and honor in mortality, eternal life; for to those who are selfishly ambitious and do not obey the truth, but obey unrighteousness, wrath, and indignation." So, if, if the kindness of God leads, should lead us to repentance, unrepentance, I don't know if that's correct, if there's such a word, unrep- Sabi kasi ng dictionary, unrepentant, okay? But unrepentance leads to wrath, okay? Unrepentance leads to wrath. And then, it goes on in verse nine. It says, "There will be tribulation..." And then it goes on in verse 9. It says, "There will be tribulation and distress for every soul of man who does evil, the Jew first, and also for the Greek. But glory and honor and peace to everyone who does good, to the Jew first and also to the Greek; for there is no partiality with God." So the next point that Paul wanted to make is, God is fair and impartial. You know why it is important? It's highly possible that in this section, see, Paul is addressing the Jews. It's highly possible. Because Jews has this, they have this wrong mindset, their wrong thinking, that because we are Jews, we are God's chosen people, we will escape the wrath to come. If you remember John the Baptist, when, in the book of Matthew, when the Pharisees came to John the Baptist for baptism, you know what John the Baptist told them? He told them, well, una sabi niya, "You brood of vipers." Grabe si John the Baptist, napaka straightforward bag salita. Sabi niya, "Who warned you to escape from the wrath to come? And do not think that because you are children of Abraham, you will escape the wrath to come." That's the idea. Because Jews have this wrong thinking that by virtue of me being a Jew, I will escape wrath. I will be saved. Therefore, this list of sins does not apply to me. It applies to the Gentiles, but it mean, it does not apply to me. But Paul is saying, God is fair, God is impartial. Whether you're Jew or you're Greek, the same wrath will apply to you. At the same time, God is fair. Whether you're Jew or you're Greek, if you repent, God will spare you from the wrath to come. Now that is revolutionary for a Jew, that is unheard of. And in fact, if you're an Orthodox Jew, in your minds, heresy 'yan, heretical teaching 'yan. But Paul is saying, God is fair and impartial. He does not prefer Jews over Greeks. He does not prefer Gentiles over non-Jews, black and white, men, women. God is impartial. And then in verse 12, he said, "For all who have sinned without the law will also perish without the law, and all who have sinned under the law will be judged by the law." Now Paul now talks about the law. In the book of Romans, you know, this word will often come out now. Ito lang, para kasi itong word na law, madalas na atemay rhythmikto throughout all our sessions. If, the law simply means, the, well, it's called the Pentateuch. The law is God's word and God's law that He has given to the Israelites. It's actually the first five books of the Bible, Genesis, Exodus, Diviticus, Numbers, Juteronomy. That's the law. For the Jews, that is sacred, and for them, it is exclusively given to them. And because they possess the law, they believe they are righteous. By virtue of them possessing the law, by virtue of them being God's chosen people, they have this wrong mindset, and they think that they are righteous. Tama, tama si Karen, the Mosaic Law, that was given through Moses. So now he introduces the law, and he introduces two kinds of people. Okay, just bear with me. One is a group of people under the law, diba? Sino 'yung mga yon? Okay, sino ba 'yung mga yon? Yon ang mga... Okay, you have an idea? Who do you think these people are who are under the law? They are the Jews. Now who are those not under the law? Okay, who are those not under the law? The Gentiles. Gentiles, in other words, non-Jew, just to make it simple. Pag hindi ka hundo, you are a Gentile, a non-Jew. Or tawag in this, they sometimes, Paul use the word Greek, because you know, that is, that during his time, yun 'yung isang predominant member of society, you know, the Greeks. So there are two groups, one under the law and one not under the law. And Paul distinguishes between them. Now what is Paul now? Let's look at the next verse. Sabi ni Paul, sa verse 13, "It is not the heroes of the law who are just before God, but the doers of the law." So what is Paul's point? Okay, just to make it simple. Paul's point is this. Obeying the law is more important than possessing the law. Okay? That's very important to understand. Because as far as the Jews are concerned, because we possess the law, we are righteous. We are owners of the law. It's like, diba? Minsan may mga bahay pinupunta natin, nakikita natin, papasok natin, may biblia na nakabukas. Wala namang masama doon, diba? Hindi mo masama yun. Pero huwag niyo isipin, dahil may biblia nakabukas sa sala nyo, may meron kayong supernatural powers, protektahan, protektahan ang Panginoon niyang ang bahay nyo, at walang masama papasok sa inyo. Diba? Hindi naman dahil may biblia doon, eh, diba? Kasi maari may biblia nga doon, pero sabi, pero sabi ni Paul, hindi ka naman doers of the law. Diba? Hindi ka naman nasusunod sa Panginoon. Importante, susunod ka sa Panginoon. What Paul is saying, ito. Those who are without the law will perish, okay? Will perish by the law, the verse 12. And then sabi niya, those who are under the law will be judged by the law. So what does that mean? If without the law, iyarika, you will perish without the law. Kung, kung may law ka naman, under the law, sana hindi kayo malito, ano? Iyarika din. Bakit? Uhusgahan ka based on the law. So kahit sa ang kapto mapat, iyarika, okay? I'm just using words that is a colloquial para maunawaan ninyo. Whether under the law ka o hindi, kawawa ka. Kasi sa law, uhusgahan ka. Pag wala ka law, you will perish, diba? So it's not, again, what's the main point? Obeying the law is, can you say that with me? Is more important than possessing the law. Because again, for as far as Jews is concerned, since we have the law, we are saved. I don't know, one of the second century Christian apologists, Justin Martyr, wrote a book called The Dialogue with Trifo. And he wrote his, I think it was perhaps the first apology in history. He would dialogue Jews and defend the Christian faith, to prove to them that the Christian faith is true. And then he had this dialogue with a Jew named Trifo. And this is what Trifo said in his writing. Sabi ni Trifo, "They are the seed of Abraham, according to flesh shall in any case, even if they be sinners." Sabi ni Trifo, "And unbelieving and disobedient towards God share in the eternal kingdom." Yun na paliniwala nila. Paliniwala lang, basta anak tayo ni Abraham, tayo ay mga hundo. Kahit na tayo ay sinners, unbelieving, disobedient, we will still share in the eternal kingdom. So Paul is now, anong tawag dito? He is now discrediting this belief of the Jews. That do not think that because you have the law, do not think, because you're children of Abraham, you are spared from the wrath to come. Sabi ni Paul, if you are under the law, you will be judged by the law. So ibig sabi nun, kung if I keep the law perfectly, then God will judge me fairly, right? In other words, if I keep the law perfectly, then I will be saved. That makes sense. But the problem is, you know, James put it this way, in James chapter 2, verse 10, sabi ni James. "For whoever keeps the whole law and yet stumbles at one point has become guilty of all." Now James is pointing to the fact that if you think you can be saved by the law, you have to keep the entire law. Now just to make this point, part of the law is the Ten Commandments. So if you say that I am righteous because I obey the law, you must keep it entirely. You must keep it perfectly. Ano bang Ten Commandments? The Ten Commandments, one of the Ten Commandments is, "Thou shalt not bear false witness." In other words, you shall not lie. Another part of the Ten Commandments is, "You shall not commit murder." So if you think that, you know, perhaps there are people, a lot of people who have not committed murder, but can you honestly say that you have never said a lie in your life? If you have told one lie in your life, what Paul is saying, you're a lawbreaker. If you break one, you break all. And therefore, no one is exempt. No one can keep the law perfectly. And then since no one can keep the law perfectly, you will be judged by the law. So yun ang ibig niya sabihin. Kahit na wala kang law or may law ka, kawawa ka, diba? You will perish. That is the idea. And then in verses 14 to 16, okay, medyo technical po ito, pero bear with me. Verse 14 to 16, he now explains the Gentiles. The Gentiles who are not under the law. Sabi niya, verse 14. "For when the Gentiles do not have the law, do instinctively the things of the law; these not having the law are a lot themselves, in that they show the work of the law written in their hearts. Their conscience bearing witness, and their thoughts alternatively accusing or else defending them, on the day when according to my gospel, God will judge the secrets of men through Jesus Christ." So what Paul is saying is this. The Gentiles or the non-Jews who don't have the law, they all, some of, a lot of them, they live by a moral code of conduct. They are good people, and they do it instinctively, right? And they believe, the reason why they live by a moral code, they also believe that if I live this way, everything will turn out okay with me. I, God will find favor with me. I will be saved. In other words, it's a, it's a religion based on deeds, right? And then, what Paul is saying, sila naman, 'yung walang law, 'yung law is written in their hearts, okay? So para madali, para madali maintindihan, o para simplihan natin, ganito lang. Paul's point is not that the law can justify by mere possession or by being a Jew. It cannot justify. It cannot justify because of your religious heritage, because you have the law. It doesn't automatically make you righteous. But what's important again, is obedience to the law and not possession of the law. So I hope that makes sense to all of you. So just to summarize, just to summarize, ito in turning of the tables, if Paul. What's our main point? Our main point is this. Judge lightly, because God will judge fairly. Judge lightly. So isipin lang ninyo, bago kayo manghusga, nangkapwa nyo. You know, if God doesn't say, the Bible's not saying you should not judge. There is a room to judge, but you have to discern it. That's not our topic for tonight. But my point is, if you want to judge, you look at yourself first. Look at yourself in the mirror and ask the Lord. "Lord, am I right before your eyes?" Why, you know, do not compare yourself with your kapitbahay, with your kamag-anak, with your, ano ba, makaasamo sa trabaho. But compare your righteousness to a holy God. And when you compare your righteousness to a holy God, God is saying, the kindness of God will lead to repentance. And when you repent of your sins, God's favor, God's forbearance, God's kindness will be upon you. But if you do not repent, what will happen? As we discussed last Wednesday, God's wrath will be upon you. Always remember, God is an impartial God. He is a fair God. So never think na, you know, God will, will not care for you just because you are not a Jew. God loves you. He is a fair judge. And what's important, Paul is saying, and God is telling us, is obedience is more important than having the law. Hindi po ka hindi ka Jew, hindi ka magja-justify. Obedience is more important, rather than, you know, having the law or having a religion or being a part of a church group. You know, some people, they think just because they're a member of a church, that would justify them. Some people think just because they are religious, that would justify them. But again, what's more important? Obedience to the law. It looked chapter 18. Okay, it looked chapter 18. There was these two persons. One, a Pharisee and a tax collector. They went to the temple to pray. This was shared by Jesus. And then the Pharisee looked up in the temple, and he prayed to the Lord. And this was his prayer. He said, "God, I thank you that I am not like other people, swindlers, unjust adulterers, or even like this tax collector." Kita 'yung tax collector, kasi noong panahon na Jesus, ang tax collector, they consider them very bad people. So again, ano ginawa niya? Kinompehan niya sa ibang tao. So sabi niya, "Salamat sa'yo, Lord. Mabait ako. Hindi tulitong tax collector na ito, napakasama ang tao nito." So hindi lang yun. I fast twice a week. I pay tithes. Diba? Very religious, full of good deeds. And then, now the story focuses on the tax collector. The tax collector standing some distance away. You know why he is standing some distance away? Nahihiyan siya lumapit sa presyentya ng Diyos. Because he looked at himself, and he compared himself to a holy God, not to the Pharisee. And in his mind, "I am a sinner." He was even unwilling to lift up his eyes towards heaven. Hiyang hiya siya sa kasalanan niya. And he was beating his breast, and all he can say is, "God, be merciful to me," a sinner. And you know how Jesus concludes the story? Verse 14, "I tell you, this man, the tax collector, went to his house justified, rather than the other. For everyone who exalts himself will be humbled, but he who humbles himself will be exalted." The word justified means declared righteous. You know, the key to justification is repentance. Repentance means to change your mind. If before you think, "Mabait ka." The truth is, you look at yourself, and you need to admit before the Lord, "I am a sinner." And when you admitted the Lord, you're a sinner in humility. You know what, you know what the Bible says? Jesus will justify you. Jesus will declare you righteous. In other words, when you admit you're a sinner, and you realize that the only solution for your sin is placing your faith in Jesus Christ, the Bible says, "God will declare you righteous." Closing story, see King Frederick of Prussia. You know, one time, we visited a jail in Berlin. And he was touring the jail, and because it was the king, you know, the prisoners were so excited. And they fell on their knees before the king, and they were saying, "King, king, king, I am an innocent man." Almost all of them were crying out, "Give us pardon." Because during that time, kings can make pardons to set people free from prison. And all they were saying, "I am innocent, I'm innocent, I was wrongly accused. You know, I don't deserve to be here." But King Frederick noticed that except for one man, one man was not speaking, he was quietly sitting in one corner, looking down. And everyone was getting his attention except for this one man. So he, he wanted to reach out to that one man, and he talked to that man. Hey, sabi niya, "Excuse me, can I talk to you?" Sabi niya, "Why are you here?" It is Jane, in jail. And the man was all alone, not replying, said, "Your Majesty, I am here because of armed robbery." And then the king asked, "Are you guilty?" And then, "Yes, Your Majesty, I am guilty. I deserve punishment." And then the king, with all his kingly power and authority, summoned the jailer and ordered, "Release this man. Release this man from prison, because I don't want him to corrupt all these innocent people around him." You know, I don't know if that story is true. But you know, it has a very, very, it has a spiritual implication. That when you confess your sins, and don't, you don't say to the Lord, "I'm innocent, I'm innocent, I'm..." "Mabait ako, mabait ako, wala kang kasalanan." But when you admit to the Lord, you're a sinner. You know, as far as God is concerned, just like the story earlier, the tax collector, God will justify you. The grace of God will be upon you. So I wanna again close in the prayer. And I will, you know, if the Lord has spoken to you, why don't we all bow our heads, close our eyes? If the Lord has spoken to you. And perhaps noon, iniisip mo, mabait ang tao. Perhaps may tendency ka, i-compare ang sarili mo sa iba, sa kapwa mo, at may tendency ka na maging mayabang, wala namang masama to. Being honest with the Lord, you're a proud person. But God has spoken to you and says, "You need to humble yourself." God opposes the proud, that gives grace to the humble. Jesus said, "Whoever exalts himself will be humbled, but those who are, yours are humble will exalt themselves." So if you want to admit that you need Jesus, you admit that you are a sinner, deserving of full punishment, deserving, in fact, deserving to experience, to go to hell, to experience the wrath of God, because you have sinned. If you're willing to admit that and say, "Lord, I deserve it, but because of Jesus, you are giving me a chance to be pardoned," then go to heaven. If that's a desire of your heart, just say along with me, just pray with me, and say these words. "Lord God, Lord Jesus, I thank you that you gave your life for me more than 2,000..." "Lord God, Lord Jesus, I thank you that you gave your life for me more than 2,000 years ago, to dine on the cross for my sins. Lord, I now place my faith in you. I accept you as the Lord and the Savior of my life. I admit that I am a sinner, deserving of punishment, but I thank you that because of your love, you are extending mercy, you are extending pardon to me. And all I need to do according to your word is to repent, to place my faith in you, Lord Jesus." So, that is what I will do tonight. I put my faith in you, what you have done on the cross for me and my sins, not what I have done, but what you have done. Not my righteousness, but your righteousness, oh God. And Lord, please help me to be a man, a woman, humble, and not quick to judge, but to see others in the light of your grace in my life. Thank you for forgiving me, thank you for coming into my life. Yes, I ask and pray in Jesus's name, amen. Thank you very much to all of you, thank you for listening, God bless you.